Hey, we're going to call the We're going to call the meeting to order. We can rise for the President's Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands in our nation, and to the people who live here. Thank you, everybody. Our secretary, Mr. Bucky Scott, is absent today. And so, Bev Albright, if you could call to roll.
Mrs. Bell?
Here.
Mrs. Albert?
Here.
Mrs. Leon? Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mrs. Olson?
Here.
Mr. Stern? Mr. Struble?
Here.
Mrs. Thompson?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Albright. Okay, we have a superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. First item on my report this evening is a recognition of one of our high school students. And that recognition is for the main semifinalists for the NMSQ, which is a national merit scholarship volleyball competition through exemplary scores on the PSATs. And it qualifies the student to go on into the competition, be eligible, to be successful in a possible scholarship opportunity through the NMSQ program. So that person is here this evening. Her name is Emily Olson. So I would like to have her come up to the podium. And I will come around to present her with a special recognition, appreciation certificate from the board and myself and the head of the board. And give the opportunity to have a photograph taken. Also, I would like to have her appearance come out as well. This is Olson and Mr. Struble. Okay.
That hug was sanctioned because she's my daughter.
Also, just coming to the close of our first month here of the 2020-21 school year. Sending some correspondence out to our learning community this week on 30 regarding some events that have taken place. And the efforts that we're proud of, our community efforts that have been being made to keep us safe and successful moving forward through the barriers, restrictions, and face guarding requirements, and social distancing. All these things are community-wide effort that allow for us to continue to have our students be able to participate in their education in some way, shape, or form through the learning options that they provide to them. So I will be sending that correspondence out additionally. And that will be information on the new screening wellness app that will assist our families in being able to respond in a more educated manner than they have been through Google Form and our paper platform that we've been using. So we're looking for that from our school as well. And additionally, you'll find on the agenda some under the programmatic consent update for our district athletics activities plan and a recommendation for that. If we get to that point on the agenda, I will reference that directly in the plan. And again, just thank you for your continued support of what we're doing in these uncharted waters that we're navigating. As I said, it's part of the league that we're about a month into this school year. And I know that our faculty, staff, administrators are working extremely hard. I know our families and our students are working extremely hard in these circumstances to be able to make it to school. But thank you for your support. That concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Cooper. Okay. We have our procedures for public participation are listed. Hopefully up there. I can't even read it. Is that right? Yes, that's right. And, okay, so do we have any presentations by the public on agenda items tonight? Seeing none. Oh. I will ask again after I add some edits. So I have two agenda edits. One is listed in the There is It's actually on Board Docs for 7A319, an additional appointment, a professional appointment. And that's listed on the website. Do I have to read that? Okay. And the second one is one I would like to add under 6A4. We have new members of the board. I have to add them to committees. I'd like to make an agenda edit to add Kristin Thompson to the facilities committee, the policy committee, the extracurricular committee, and Ashley Godfrey to the finance committee, to the policy committee, and the technology committee. And as part of that, we will be removing Beverly Albright from the policy committee. And we will be removing Bucky Scott from the extracurricular committee. And that will be added 6A4. Do any other board members have agenda edits they want to talk about? Have you? Okay, moving on to consent items. Consent items 3A1 through 13. Do I have a motion for that? Mr. Struble, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Miller, do we have any discussion on anything under consent items? Okay, hearing none. Ms. Albright, do we have a vote?
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
I don't know.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mrs. Leon?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Stern? Mr. Struble?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yeah.
And myself, yes. Excellent.
Thank you. Okay, under personnel consent, we're going to take these separately. Can I have a motion for Which is everything up to the end of professional for appointments?
So that would be 1, 2, 1?
Yeah.
So it would be 1, 2, and 3?
Yeah, yeah, so everything up to Megan Kaplan.
Mrs. McAdams?
Okay. Any discussion on any of that? Okay, can I get a vote?
I'm sorry, it was a personal matter.
Ms. Bell? Mr. Struble? Mr. Struble? Oh. Ms. Leonie? It doesn't matter. It does. It does. Don't tell our solicitor. It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter.
Because it does.
All right, it's not good. All right, Mrs. Godfrey?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonie?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Struble?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Albright?
Yes.
Excellent.
Okay, can I get a motion for under personnel 4, 2, 1, 2, and 4 only? Um, any discussion on those? Okay, can I get a vote?
And Mrs. Leonie?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Struble?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yeah.
Mrs. Albright?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Godfrey?
Yes.
Mrs.
Okay, can I get a motion for finance 5A1 through 3?
I'll make that question.
Mr. Struble, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Miller? Is there any discussion on the items under finance? Seeing none. Can I get?
There's a discussion, but it rattles down.
Discuss it amongst yourselves.
Think about it for a while.
So it's just all of 5?
All of 5. Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Struble?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Albright?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Godfrey?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonie?
Yes.
Excellent.
Okay. So if no one has any objection when we get to programs, I think I'd like to get a motion for 1, for 6A1, 3, and 4 that I added. We can handle that, and then we can have our discussion about the changes to the health and safety plan because that's going to be a little bit more involved. So if no one objects, I'd like that motion. Ms. Bell? Second. Ms. Leonie? Any discussion on those issues without, not including?
Which one am I getting rid of?
We're just getting rid of number 2 for a second. The middle one. No. Well. The second one. Can I have a vote on those?
Okay.
Mr. Struble?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yeah.
Mrs. Albright?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Godfrey?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonie?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Olson?
Yes.
Excellent.
Okay, can I get a motion for 6A2?
Still moved.
Second? Ms. Leonie? Okay, so we're making some changes. Well, we're recommending some changes to our health and safety plan for athletics, specifically about attendance. Okay. I'll throw that to Dr. Cooper to kind of give us the clip notes.
Okay, what I'm going over is a reference on page 8 of our athletics and activities health and safety plan on limits on gathering in phase 5. And the adjustments are for outdoor events. Each annual area school district participant's parents will be given two vouchers for those outdoor events. So that the outdoor events will be limited to a total of 250 people with the exception of football because of the vast number of participants that are involved in that particular arena. So in addition to the football participants, staff, and associate event personnel, two vouchers will be provided to each student, which includes not only the participants in football, but also the participants in cheerleading and participants in the band. Vouchers may be used by close family members only and will be given to visiting teams for outdoor events when the total number of people in the stadium is less than 250. And that calculation will be made after all of our participants have received those two vouchers. And that would come to play in the exception of the football. And cheerleading, as I said, in the band members will also receive two vouchers for football games. For indoor events, our recommendation in the plan will be limiting the indoor event to participants only. JV players are not permitted in the gym while varsity is playing, and vice versa. So that both coaching staffs are permitted in the JV match, both coaches, and the varsity match as well. So basically, all the participants now will be able to be in one gym instead of hovering around the world with substitutes coming in and out of the gym is where our recommendation is looking to be. Spectators attending events will obviously be required to adhere to the guidelines and face coverings at all times. While it should probably socially distance beyond the family unit. Spectators that are unable to comply with those guidelines set forth by the district will be asked to leave with four separate privileges attending events for the remainder of the year. And if the spectator refuses to leave, law enforcement will be contacted and considered trespassing. Opposing spectators are only to comply with the guidelines set by the district, be asked to leave, and risk their entire district privilege attending any events posted by the district for the remainder of the year. Spectators will be prohibited from viewing contests outside the stadium, on district property, and unmanageable trespassing names or open spaces to play. Should not, unfortunately, get to that point at any time. And anyone feeling well, not feeling well should refrain from attending any of these events at our location or any of our locations. So this is the recommendation we're making and the changes in our health and safety plan to improve the number of participants allowed. I do need to also caution the board so that they understand that based on what's out there in the court system right now, if this is approved by the board that at any time this ruling, this change in the court systems, that would be a requisite for us to return to the 250-25 indoor applicable we had by the district.
I have a question on that. Hasn't the governor stated that it's up to the local school districts to decide? He recommends against it, but when he vetoed the bill, he basically said it's up to the local school districts in the community to decide.
And that is also what the recommendation that has come down from PIAAA and the BCIA? A? Correct. Because for us to set, and that that's what we're doing. Yeah. But they could, but there could be further litigation that could lead us, you know, lead, you know, there could be a situation where we have to reevaluate this. I think this falls within what the BCIA is recommending and what the PIAAA is recommending.
It could be, but the governor, when he vetoed it, he said that it really doesn't matter because he's already decided it's up to the local school districts. He just wanted to veto.
You mean that was his veto statement?
Yes, it was in the press, and he said that more than once now.
We know that this is an appeals process that was requested by the courts. Mr. Struble, correct me if I'm misspeaking here, that it was requesting to have a response by maybe, I believe, the end of September. So I can change what currently is out there in the courts.
So the issue is the Western District of Pennsylvania. The federal court for the Western District of Pennsylvania ruled that gathering limits are unconstitutional on September 14. On September 20th, well, in subsequent to that, the governor filed an appeal to the Third Circuit and had asked the trial court, the federal district court, to stay their order pending the appeal. The trial court has expected to reject that on September 23rd. On Friday, the 25th, the governor filed a motion for a stay with the Third Circuit Court of Appeals. The Third Circuit ruled that the respondent's file applied to that motion by Wednesday, September 30th. And I think we can expect a decision from the Third Circuit on that motion to stay very shortly thereafter. I would note that the Pennsylvania Department of Education issued a subsequent to the Western District's decision indicating that it was their recommendation to continue to comply, but that implied that it's not made until the end. There has been a split in opinion, legal opinions, regarding whether or not the Western District's decision applies statewide. Some law firms have implied that it does not. PSBA issued an informal opinion that it did not. We believe that it does. My firm is of the opinion that it does apply statewide. But you are facing this potential stay, which should be ruled on this week.
But isn't the lawsuit much broader than the spectator for schools?
Several news stories out on the western part of the state.
But it's for restaurants and theater and everything else? And that's really what they're fighting.
There were multiple orders that were ruled unconstitutional. One of them, it was the non-essential business closure order. And part, one of the orders that was struck down was unconstitutional, was the original gathering.
I'm just saying, his comment after the veto was in the press a couple times is it doesn't really matter because it's up to the local school districts, and we're not going to enforce it anyway.
Well, if the Western District's decision, if the Third Circuit doesn't stay, the Western District's rule, then it would be up to districts.
Right.
And I'm sure you were all aware, the House Bill 27 being setting that would have given the thought discretion to school districts.
Well, that's when he said it, that's why I'm confused. When he vetoed that, that's, he made that comment.
I was vetoing it and not overriding that.
No, no, but he made the comment when they didn't override it, that it didn't matter anyway because it's up to the school districts. He's made that clear.
I know that, we can go Friday, send letters out to superintendents saying that it was a recommendation and that they were appealing to superintendents to give that.
So, I mean, the upshot is that as far as the indoor recommendations, the recommendation of the administration is that we at least up the number of people that are allowed to be in that room from 25 to having it be the efficiency, the coaches, and all the players on that team, which right now, I guess, impacts mostly volleyball because right now, not everybody on both teams can even be in the same room with the play. And then they're being asked to, they're subbing in, and they haven't been watching what's going on, you know? Yeah, go ahead.
I have a liability, but education, which is a big part of the school's role, educating kids, about the PDE, pretty much based on recommendations of sports. About PDE, they consider following PIAAA, which is a short, short device. And again, I'm a sports friend. And regarding PDE, it's a liability there for us.
It's a liability.
It's a liability there because, you know, what pass issue will be done about PDE, if we're not going to do it with sports, and so far for school. So there is, there is questionable, right?
It's questionable. Again, the assumption that we ran the seeds, I think they, you know, a potential thing, I argue that by ignoring the guidance that we would invite us to the conference in our major, that's a tough word to use. But I'm certainly, I do.
I was trying to understand it more than anything else. I just want to understand, because I'm making my position based on that, you know?
It's not despised, it would be fact.
Yeah.
It's not that, that, that we're being allowed.
No, that they're to be like, well, they're not that, but they're to be like, unconstitutional, so that we're.
No, no, because this only applied to the governor's order. And part of the argument was that things would be different. You know, the facts leading to COVID-19 vary across the state. And his orders were deeply applicable across the state. And that was one of the weaknesses and faults in his orders. They are not ruled that local, you know, authorities cannot promote their rights. And in fact, Philadelphia, they came out with a statement that the personal order for serve local means. And there's nothing that's come out that says that a local school is who can create their own laws.
So like, right now, if you don't include the opposing team, we're talking about football. So inside, we discussed what I think, you know, yeah, go ahead.
Inside, I don't know how many, I'm trying to stream. If you allow one parent per person playing, how many would that have? I'm just asking.
Like, it could be, it could be as many as 30 people, you know? I mean, and that is not the recommendation from, of the
I was just asking.
Yeah, and we are streaming, so the parents can watch. I thought, my, so my thought.
Just seeing how the children are not able to be seen on the screen.
Oh, right, that's.
Yes, we're not that.
Neither was the ban. But that's okay. But the way it was explained to me, and Dr. Cooper and Ms. Schmidt can correct me if I'm wrong, before, it was a hard 25-250. So we're expanding the, that in, the idea of this change would be to expand that both for indoor and outdoor. We'll get to, we'll talk about football on its own in a second. And do that in baby steps, you know, and not, not do, not do the whole universe of like, let's also, and let's also have parents, one parent, or maybe, and then maybe two parents, you know? We've got to move it up.
Actually, we can success with the others.
And that's kind of the way I thought we were, if I'm wrong, that we're moving baby steps, like, you know, the changes are too.
Yes, and I think it's important to to utilize some unintended consequences of choices of some of our neighbors, and what we know, to help inform our decisions to make sure that we're providing, to be able to provide a safe environment for our students and families and allowing some additional opportunity to nappled for our participants in the baby plan. And we're just going to be able to see them in those events that are coming. And with the indoor, to make sure that we get all of our participants and activity of that athletic venue to be able to be on one another's pace.
At least, yeah, yeah, in this iteration of changes to their, yeah. So my understanding from soccer and field hockey outside right now, that the 250 limit that we would be leaving in place with this is no, is no impediment to family members and friends coming to, coming to the games. There aren't enough people involved in the actual sport to make it so that There aren't enough people involved in the actual sport to make it so that, so that we're turning people away at the door for those, for like soccer and things like that.
Correct.
Yes, if you stick to the two, the two voucher.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
For your, your.
Voucher for parents?
Two vouchers for students.
For students, for what? No, it's for the family.
For family?
Yes.
But right now, we're in a situation when it comes to football, when you include football, students, students, coaches, support staff, ambulance, and then cheer plus their support staff and band and their support staff, and the other students from the other team, where most, all the teams, they're not bringing their cheerleaders or their, or their band at this moment, they're not traveling. We were only able to have 20, 28 parents come to the last game. If we made it so that every student that was participating from our school could have two, two people come, that would be an additional, like, two, over 200 people in the stands. Because we're talking like 130 kids, 150 kids from our school that are involved in putting on that, putting on that game. So, 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 you know, we have to be comfortable saying that we're okay with, not only do we have bands taking up one whole section of risers, because they need to social distance as well, and then for parents, it would be like 100, 260 people in the stands. Both sides will be available.
This will allow for us to follow the CDC guidance of social distancing, move a recommendation about CDC, and while at the same time, coupled with the wearing face colors. So we did take the time to take a look at our venue and felt that this was something we could appropriately do in that side of recommendations.
So we know the capacity of, the number of people we can fit in, having six feet apart?
Yeah.
I was at a stand that had sickers, so they had two here and then six feet over, they had two on the bleachers.
Right.
So what is the capacity?
Well, we took the approach of taking the low gait pairs and singles. And when we did that, we came up with a couple different scenarios and felt that the two participant recommendation would allow for us to appropriately socially distance six feet, or cluster distance at six feet. When I say cluster, that means like family members sitting together six feet apart from another group of two parents, and so on and so forth, and also allow for some singles to sit in there.
And, you know, it would, you know, it's not, some other school districts are doing a thing where they have a hard, a hard, you know, dead, you know, this is how many people we're going to allow in, and once we get to that certain point, we're either going to do a lottery, or once we get to that, like, I don't know, like 601st person, we're going to turn them away. And we could go that route, but at least this way, all the students that are participating would be able to have their parents or guardians, grandma, you know, a brother, sister, there cheering them on, without us having to, because we had, when we were, before, at the extracurricular meeting, before the possibility of us being able to do this, when, you know, we knew we would have to have this conversation down the road, you know, we were trying to decide how do we, how are we going to make the decision of whose, whose parents get to come when there's less than 30 of them all out in those stands?
I have two questions, one, one, I need to check.
They get, the kids get the, the kids get the vouchers ahead of time. So like, the way it worked this time, that was that my daughter got a, she's a senior, she's in the band, and so, because it was senior night, I got to go. And so she got an email in Sulegee on Monday saying, we got two tickets for you if you're, you know, and this, we got a hard deadline, that if you're, if no one's taking them, we're moving on to the next one. And then, but when she came home on Thursday, she had her tickets.
No, I need to check that it's apparent, like, I assume, I know my parents don't take them from my friends. How do you check that it shows your parents? That's what I'm trying to ask.
You didn't say their parents. You said their family.
Yeah, family.
They were parents.
Yeah.
Well, the parents got access before, so I'm not knocking it down.
No, I understand. If a student wanted to hand.
It was hard enough to get in, wait until you get, I don't need to burn anything.
So if, if a student, like, decided, I'm not inviting my, my parent, I'm like, I'm letting my girlfriend and her brother come, is that an option for a child?
So our plan for this, if we do approve the move up, our plan is to set up a ticket pickup prior to the game.
Okay.
At 6:00 PM, come, if you're student, if it's you.
Yeah.
You put your ID, and you would, we would check you in, and you would receive your tickets right there.
Okay, so it's going to be like a will call situation?
Yeah, and then you'll need to show the tickets.
Yeah, no, that's, and that's new. Yeah.
Pushing in.
No, I understand.
And the second thing is, you know, and again, not only because presentation will ideal, but I'm not focused, I actually, it's not, it's not looking at my own personal priorities. This distancing, so pretty much then, you know, police, whoever's there, anybody there saying, monitor this, this is a school.
Yeah.
For the monitoring, really, you're only going to have two people practicing together as a family.
They were there when there were only, they were, they were there when there were only 30 of us.
There were 24 of us in the stands, and it was constant reminders to social distance, move, and do this, do this, and tents.
That's good, I mean, I'm not getting those, I get it.
Yeah, it's going to have to happen.
There's public, public amounts to the VA about reminders, there's science, there's security personnel, there's our official security officer, there's initiatives there. So those, all those things are there to set reminders to the folks.
And it's, it was in the plan that if somebody was at one of our events and wasn't following social distancing or mask wearing requirements, that we have the right to tell them that they're done with athletic events for the year.
Is that my cable or my work?
No, if you can't wear one, you can't come.
I just don't think that any situations.
No. Yeah. It, you know, no one's going to force you to wear one, but you can't, but you can't come if you can't wear one. Yeah, to the, to the game, yeah. That was in there, I thought it was, yeah.
I would just like to know the capacity of the stadium, normal capacity and the normal capacity of the gym.
Normal capacity of the stadium is a 1200?
And normal capacity of the gym. Just so you have a reference, how, I understand it's out of what the normal.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know.
Is it the stadium?
Do you know normal capacity?
The gym is 1000.
1000.
When you have those, that's what you're done.
Okay.
And the capacity for this here is 1200 on the home side, and I'm going to say 1000 on the opposite side, because it's too small.
Okay. So I just wanted to point that out because what we're talking about is 500 in a stadium that has.
And other schools, and other schools that have approved based on a percentage are approving 33, 33-ish percent, and not all the bleachers are available for spectators because a whole section of bleachers that would normally seat 300 people are taken up by the band.
Right, but we're talking about.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'd also like to point out that the band, these members, is in stadium, that I understand, but the football team is not in any contact. They are on the field, they don't have contact with any of the spectators. So I really view it as two separate sections, you know, government, it doesn't, 250 on the field, 250 in the stands. I mean, they're close to that limit and they're not interacting.
And again, recommendation also is based on that six foot social distancing guidance. And when we had the athletic department, the spin, and so we go out and measure, put tape marks down, so we could see what that looked like, and get the appropriate counts. You know, we handled the two vouchers per participant in the largest venue we had, and that's where we came up with the recommendation, we were able to do that.
And if this, you know, if what's being recommended by the, by the administration is, you know, I have no problem with revisiting it and raising it if we had to, or if we felt like we could, but I think this is a good first step.
Right, I agree, it's a good first step, and I appreciate you looking at it, too. I do think that it's a small step, and as you get into winter stores, I think we need to gauge where we are.
Agreed.
Where the pandemic is.
Absolutely.
And what, how it's aligned with the volleyball team, because they're completely engaged, and then what we're going to do for winter stores. Because I think that we're, hey, we need to consider.
Absolutely. Yeah, I was, I had the same thought, you know, when we get to basketball especially, you know?
It's hard for me, you take a look at restaurants. I'm going to a restaurant tomorrow, it's 25%. And I get it, I'm great, I go.
It's 50.
Now you're lying, I'm lying in school, where it was held with a present, but we just are, and so that's really where, I mean, so I have a personal feeling that I'm not going to, where I'm representing there, so that's the reason I ask the questions, I add.
But.
It's not clear, that's what we held today. The lawsuit says that we're not held to it today, if it stays.
Well, but because we, to me, because we, because we are kind of, as you said, like, we're let loose on our own to make our own rules, that, that, that's, to me, why, you know, taking it one step at a time is reasonable, because it is all on us if it, if it fails miserably.
I agree.
So I'm, so I'm.
I'm not advocating.
Yeah.
So did the checks voted in tonight, and it's approved, does that apply to the powder puff game on Saturday?
Yeah. Powder puff?
So, so that is not mentioned for your school activity? So is that, that's why?
No, it does not apply.
So parents.
So the 250 limit?
No, it would, that is, that is something that would be outside the scope of this. That is the only activity at this point that has been approved in the state, supplemental or in addition to athletics. So the, in order for us to be able to do that safely, it's just the participants and everything else that live streaming at this point. I would not advocate opening that up to the confines of this.
Are they doing a bonfire this?
Are they?
No, at this point, no.
Are we going to live feed the powder puff game?
Yes.
I never go to the powder puff game, so I don't know.
You've never had a kid in it before?
I did. My son was in it, but, yeah, I didn't go. All right, so, any other questions for the administration about this before we vote?
My question.
Yep, yep.
Is that homecoming court going to be allowed to come?
Yeah, I actually asked the same question, and the way was, they are considered part of the participants of that game, so then their parents, they will each get two tickets. So, but yeah, that'll be, and I think it's, it's an additional 16, no, it's only an additional, like, 14 kids because some of them are already involved in cheer and football. So I think it's only, is that right? That the homecoming court, how many kids are, how many kids are up for court? Is it 10 total?
I don't know. I have to get that.
It's fine, but.
We are not deep that deep, so.
Yeah, it's, but it, but the way it was written, they're considered participants for the homecoming game. So their parents will be able to be here?
They will, vice versa, soccer, football, softball.
Correct.
Two. Two, and this is a recommendation by the district? Yes.
Any other clarifications requested or questions on the changes that are being proposed? Can we have a roll call vote?
Mrs. Strobel?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry, yes.
Mrs. Valerie, yes.
Lee, yes.
Is that a name?
Mr. Weller?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, moving on to personnel, and like I said, there was an addition under 319 for personnel, but do I have a motion for Personnel 7A 1 through 4? Mr. Strobel, do I have a second? Do I have any, any comments, questions? Okay, hearing none. Can I get a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. It was my turn, right?
Sure.
Okay.
I started all.
It wasn't, I'm sorry. All right, under old business, A 1 to 2, 1 to 2? Mr. Strobel, do I have a second? Ms. Leoni, can we get a vote? Unless there's any edits to it, I don't think so.
Uh, 8, 8A 1 2.
8A 1 2. Um, Mr. Strobel, Ms. Leoni?
Mr. Weller?
Mr. Strobel and Ms. Leoni?
Mrs. Lowry, yes.
Mrs. Lowry, yes.
Mrs. Valerie, yes.
Mrs. Strobel, yes.
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 Okay, I don't have any new business listed. Do I have any presentations by the public on any issues discussed in the meeting or any other issues? Okay, hearing none. Have a motion for adjournment? Mr. Strobel, do I have a second?
A second.
We're adjourned, thank you, everybody.